May I ask please?
Yes, sir. Um, I don't know.
I'm with you.
Thank you. Well, I mean, rain or not for sure or not.
We both agree on this.
Okay.
Kyle said he was gonna pay your final fee.
Okay. You don't know for sure or not?
No.
That's true. Take my word for it. My word for it.
The hard fee to pay is the, your wife's fee?
Yes.
All for that?
All for that. I have staying, so I was not here. You guys were missing me, so I'll not prove it, man.
Yeah, I don't worry.
How'd y'all make it through last week? Did y'all have a stare off?
It was hard. It was hard.
Hey, roll over. Thank you, Toby, moving everything.
I moved on two things, I think.
There's three there.
You got the lead today, don't ya?
Chad, there's a spare.
We got this.
You got, you take it.
I don't like moving, I like thirty.
I don't like moving, because it involves packing, so. Oh, sorry, wrong one.
You remember that phrase, weeks an hour to pack, three weeks to unpack?
I'm going on two years in my house, that's about all.
Supposedly, if you haven't touched it in six months, you can throw it away, but I'm not very good at that.
It's just annoying to have to pay it all away.
Stuff I should just throw away, but I just don't do it.
Always wanted, after I throw it away.
I threw away quite a bit of stuff. Because it was stuff I had at Boxers from college. And figured I needed a research paper and...
Hell no, you sell them, dude, so you might not have to work there as hard.
Yes.
So it's all the grades, like, yeah, we're not gonna pay you for that.
I like moving. Everything goes out of the truck, doesn't it? When I'm helping somebody, I ain't gonna throw it away to come carry it back. I'm not helping no more if you don't throw it away.
I'd have to pay you.
I thought I lost my grandma's dishes since last time we went. And finally, I was screaming and yelling and everything else, and finally, I found the box, and so.
This is the only one I gotta do right.
How about planning those?
I won't throw stuff like that away.
I was sure almost thinking that we would left it like laying, because it was like the last thing that I put in the, in my car. And I thought, oh my gosh, I left it in that house.
I think a motion approved.
Okay.
Home paper. Invoice for payment for doors and tables from commissars meeting two sixteen, sixteen. I helped Clyde normally there.
Here's both of them, here's the quote on top. You notice what the POs were put on for? He said he subtracted six hundred dollars from that original one, because the glass is still not in. But the original POs were put on for the wrong amount. Tell me what to do.
I'm not talking to anybody from California. My boy.
This is what we talked about last week, table, because Chad wasn't in. The amounts are not right.
Yeah, the amounts are not right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's six hundred square foot. Quotes are dated prior to that, so.
Right, and your warrants are supposed to be dated prior to that.
Yes, yes, right, yes, they are, but what I'm saying is.
Some of your invoices are still underneath. That's just the quote.
Yes, yeah. I got that, but what I'm saying is, when this was quoted by Tony, it had the full amount, it wasn't.
Right, right, right.
I mean, if you had done it off this invoice date, I'd see why you'd put the wrong amount. Right. Invoice date two twelve.
Sorry.
Doing.
You wrote two twelve.
Bernie's scratching, like, I want, I want.
Any hangups gloss in yet? No money.
I haven't heard from Bernie. Bernie called me on Tuesday last week. And, actually, I called Bernie on Tuesday last week to let him know that the warrants were not issued, because we tabled it. He called me on Wednesday, he had a funeral to go to on Thursday. He thought he could get them in Friday, but I'd have a good scene, so I haven't heard from him since then.
That's all I'm gonna go, I do, because I have glasses.
My problem is, if we pay those like that, then what are we gonna do about the other six hundred dollars? Because if it's a partial pay, you can leave that amount out there, but where the amount is not included in those POs, do we put an additional PO on now for six hundred dollars each? I would say splitting the POs. But I don't know physically how you can go in there and leave a partial pay on there when it has paid the full amount. I mean, I can go in there and edit the PO, but somebody's gonna write up a letter explaining why we went in there and edited the PO. Since we're putting it on for more. And then that will take care of that, but it's a lot of it's ands, there's and buts, and everything else.
About how we do it, it's actually done wrong.
You are correct.
So we either need to just decide whether we're gonna pay this and edit the PO and sign a letter saying we know it's wrong, and then deal with Tony getting this why? Or we need to just add two more, another PO to cover the other twelve hundred dollars? Two POs for the six hundred.
Would it still be considered splitting if you explained?
Yeah, it's, it's still splitting, we're gonna, yeah. The guy gave us a quote, it's dated prior, I mean, he done nothing wrong, this is on our end.
Yes.
Is one easier for you, either way?
Either way, it's no different. I just want, I mean.
Either way, we're gonna have to take a lump on it.
And then I do edit those, you guys are gonna have to sign them again. So, because you're signing the ones that are for the twenty-six fifty there. So if we're gonna edit it.
You know, I think we oughta, you just made me think of this, but I think we need to go ahead and pay these and put another one, so that he can at least get part of his money, since he's done.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I've already, that's where I was going with that, is I've already put him off for a week. And I promised him that he would get paid for the twenty-six fifty last week, and then he did not. It's not his fault whatsoever.
This is pretty, I mean, that, that's why I was pointing out the date earlier, because that just proves that. You know, if he came in and gave us a quote later, it'd be different.
Yeah.
Right. I'm gonna make the motion that we go ahead and pay these, and put on additional POs for the remainder, and sign their letters, so that we realize this was a mistake, and move forward with it. Because, I mean, the works.
Do you want two additional POs, one for six hundred each?
We'll have to, because they're on two different counts.
Yeah. Just making sure. And you guys aren't sure I get a lot of them?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I second the motion. Home paper.
Sorry.
Alright, okay. Guess you'll have to sign.
But then I'm gonna, when we.
It's not a good way, but I'll try.
That's why it's on the agenda. I didn't either. Um, then when you guys make a motion to approve these, we need to state those two POs also, then. On the twenty-sixty-one and twenty-sixty-two, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, we're done, ain't no worship. We should upgrade the jails, case we end up there.
At least the POs.
And do not let Chad change the color before I go.
I vote we don't.
No, 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 no.
Back to traditional, everything?
Yeah.
And the jumper is not the two-piece.
One of the places I like to send all yours, where they got the golf course and basketball range and...
And I require a cage size to repay matches.
Damn, we gotta get your refrigerator for that cheap. It must be out in many fridges, so. Sure it is. March Delworth, he's got defrosted.
You wanna write me a column on that?
Yeah. What?
Sure.
I'm writing a column every month now, for my final ten months.
The money to pay you.
I don't know about that. You're a employee, you can't. No, I cannot really, honestly.
Okay.
Like, closing months for the final ten months.
Free? Yeah, we'll take it free. Pay that much.
I'll give it to you free, as long as I don't get charged for putting it in.
That's what I meant.
She's getting ready to pay you for it.
I don't think we pay you that much, it wouldn't be worth the money. Quarter.
No, I think we pay like five bucks a submission. No, I submit for free, if you put it in. I was worried that you were gonna charge me to put it in. I'll read it first. Sure, I mean, it'll be legit.
Kyle's going to win.
Yes. Kyle will be your next commissioner.
As we put in there, as he writes it, too.
I want to put my sport behind Kyle's fate. He is the future.
I priced this one up, it's two hundred bucks a submission. Who's that?
Ah, he's four.
Can't share.
Oyster. Thanks.
Yeah, the worshiper.
All the things, just now, before I came over.
Good, I'm seeing you.
Oh. I'm worried this one I'm going.
I didn't want to leave the last few videos.
I got the trouble yesterday.
No, can't share it, we're gonna share it. Those are gonna catch share.
Then she'll eat anything. She ate her cereal, and that was it. And they tried to get her to eat anything off the table, and she wasn't good. And I tried Cool Whip, and she kinda like looked, but then I dipped her spoon in the Cool Whip and gave her her spoon. Oh my goodness. She went to town, so I acted like the twelfth spoonful. Her mama went, "Oh my gosh, Zaden told on me." He come up, and his sister was like covered with Cool Whip, and Cool was all over her shit. And I went to go get a washcloth, and I said, "Oh, tell Mama Kenzlin to uke." "What am I doing?" He goes downstairs and tells Mama, he goes and gets Kasia, and brings her upstairs, not worrying about Kenzlin. "Oh, I go, little rat."
You get drunk, thank you.
So now we better talk. Or I better.
If he would've, if he would've asked for something, he would've been smart.
Yeah. Candy, and I'll shut up.
Must start teaching him better. Instead of candy, take money.
Yeah, money.
Ten dollar bills.
And then give it to Kyle.
And then we'll split it, buddy. You take five, I'll take five.
That letter needs to be signed by another.
I was just wondering why we had a copy, but now I see why.
Yeah.
But I'm also concerned that it just says a mountain, doesn't it?
Look at the next one. It actually shows what it is, batteries, and, um, batteries and dollars. A dollar, shit, thank you.
Didn't see that.
He said he turned it in to here, this office, before it went, came across, but I never got it, so. I just called out there and got a copy of it. So.
Yeah, but even, I mean, if that was legit, I still don't think that's... I mean, I see what you say, it works shows, but I mean.
That's why they printed that one off for me, is because there was nothing on there.
Yeah.
But I mean, he should've actually gotten the receipt receipt besides that when it was turned in, but that's all they could generate for me, was that other page. And then they gave me a copy of that one, look, I had who had signed for it. So. I made him sign it. Write it up, why we didn't have an original receipt.
What's the date on it?
Um. Oh, I'm sorry.
One twenty-two sixteen, even if it turned in here.
Yeah, because we didn't start this until the three and a third word, so.
Yeah, but we don't know that he turned it in either.
Yeah, I didn't have to say, I don't know where he turned it, that's just what he said. I don't have a clue where he turned it in at, that's just what he said, so I just called out there and got a copy.
Was this, was this February sixteenth?
Well, it's just a little bit of a receipting report. Yeah, I have no idea where it was at, but that's all why we had a copy of it.
Think they have a copy.
They don't keep a copy of those little sales receipts on there.
Yeah.
Copy of is that, what they seem like they're stacking.
Yeah, let's go.
They keep the pink part of the charge account receipt.
Right. But they have to keep one copy, and then one copy goes to their main office, and one copy comes to you.
Yeah.
And so, but we didn't have any copies, so they made a copy of their one that they keep.
Twelve? Twenty-four? For what? Safety glasses? Huh? Safety glasses? Glasses for what? Safety glasses.
And I taped up the letter on that one. The vendor told me that he had ordered stuff, that Tony himself never came up to me to order stuff, and I did not get the PO fit on that day, because he was trying to get the file folders, so I told him I ordered it, but he still never came up to me to have a PO fit on.
Who's, who's present on fair board now? David Phillips. I guess I probably know, but I can't, I didn't.
Anything else to sign?
Oh yeah, we'll just see what it looks like.
You need to cut them off.
That hurts.
So we just signed the bottom of the warrant.
Wrong warrant. Didn't have the other down, I didn't sign it. Have Jean kept her salary wrong, or what? It's a salary reimbursement?
No, it's a, we have to get it around. It's more than just passes.
Okay, I'll see it now.
No, the year was wrong on one of them, and I did call him and ask him for permission to change the year, because they had two thousand and six.
I'm looking at Jean kept her, wow!
No, I think that was just a typo, but I didn't want to change something.
Yeah, I don't blame you. Fucking joke, what? Should've told you last time.
I think this little bit is confused.
It was not transport service. Montgomery County Jail, Independence, Kansas. Who depends on what kind of city? This was already signed.
These are yours, Chad, from last week, so.
I seen that after I started to say that. I just, for the first, when I first seen it, I was thinking blanket, because it was already signed, but it wasn't marked, I thought maybe it'd just been missed, and I recognized it. I'm watching, look at me, girl.
I'm glad, I'm so proud of you.
Yeah.
I'm just a little slow, I didn't figure you, I didn't, I didn't figure it out before I I didn't think of why myself.
Do you need to do that things on turn eight? Like, the promotion?
That's on the agenda.
It does have to be on the agenda?
I wouldn't think it would have to be.
Trying to spell it, something?
I was gonna do, um, those.
Normal sheets?
I was doing the normal weight sheet.
Because he's your employee, you don't have a say on anything, you wanna change it.
Options to be done on that, just do a weight sheet on it.
I moved from the approval, including twenty-eight sixty-one and twenty-eight sixty-two. Let's go, we got this now. We're almost like team high five, aren't we?
Home paper. Okay. Blanket purchase orders.
I'm in District Two. Kyle, I'm feeling team high five, too.
You have the direct for commission?
If you don't move away from my hand, you'll start swaying me or something.
Got you, Kyle.
He's pretty good.
I moved to approve my blanket purchase orders for District Two. Second, home paper. Road crossing permit. Yeah, it's no charge. I moved to approve that. Fourteen twenty-five eleven, where's that at? It's all in the paper.
If Chad's here, you don't have to.
That's where you go. Right! That's up north of you. But you guys are gonna miss me. Fourteen twenty-five eleven? Because I'm twenty-four.
I am.
How's everything now, bud?
Good.
Peachy?
Yeah.
I'm twenty-one, twenty-four eleven.
I got five bedroom tickets this week.
See, you can't give them away.
No, I'm pretty sure my little boys are pretty excited, and watch us beat LSU again.
You have one less little boy that I have my way.
I got to that.
Private property, eastbound southeast corner, seventeen twenty-one. Construction on K-Road six hundred.
He'd probably pay for it himself, just like you, eleven. He kinda runs from me, I don't know why. He couldn't run very far yesterday, he was kinda stuck in a basket.
I moved to approve the private property.
Second, home paper. Approval award court for labor for construction on bridge west of Highway Eight, K-Road.
There's, um, both of them. The top one is the first one, and the bottom one is the second one.
K and O, Roman Yard, Brick Bays.
Only K and O and Roman Yard sent something in. And we want to go pay it out, because they have their own equipment, they're cheaper, and they could start tomorrow.
Has equipment?
Brick deeds, stand there. There it is, right there.
But you're cheaper and can start.
I thought, I thought she said rower yard on top, what's she say?
I'm sorry, I have rower yard, when is it though?
I'm sorry, it's brick deeds and K and O.
Deeds while in bridge construction.
I didn't even say rower yard.
So. Who was your third one that didn't move, phone? Rower yard.
Road and Yard.
On both of them?
Mm-hmm.
There's a motion on that.
I want to make a motion to award it to K and O Construction.
Both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Going cheaper?
K and O is seventeen thousand five hundred, or the K-Road?
K-Road, okay.
Are you saying one the other?
Same as the other. And what is out of what account? Your, um, yeah. To the apple. Good morning.
You have a motion, a second already?
I have a motion. Need a second.
I'll second, I'll read it.
Still need a second.
Still need a second.
I'll second. All in favor?
Everybody, I?
Good board.
There's another one, Kyle, same thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought. I'll shoot you. I've been on a mile this week, you get me, right? Looking bill payment number twelve, for thirty-two thousand ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one cents for heat and electrical project courthouse.
Um, Charles was out. I had to this, I started with it on the agenda last week, um, he was out, he finally got back with me on Monday, so I had not put it on the agenda. They had sent a bill for forty-one thousand ninety-seven ninety-one. Um, he replied back to me that it needed to be revised and resubmitted, the mechanical work needs to be modified, the effort to show operation and maintenance manuals and tests and balance report has not been submitted and approved, please refer to the page two of the attachment. You guys want to look at the original compared to the one that they did submit, um, and Charles did get back with me on the new one that they submitted, and he said that that amount was approved for payment number twelve. So here's the first one, here's the second one. I just don't get any confused, so I'm gonna look one switch.
Both the same date. Excuse me. Yes, I move to pay that, second.
All in favor? Janitor, make seventeen dash three, such as visual inspection capital aid, take seventeen dash two A, such as visual inspection M and O, four sixty-five hundred dollars for soil updates and mapping visual inspection area three, number three.
She just wanted to pay, basically just wanted to pay it out of her M and O instead of out of capital outlet, so she just transferred the amount from her capital outlet into M and O.
I move to the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Twenty fifteen, demineral interest report for unclaimed mineral interest available for inspection county clerk's office.
This is basically, um, unclaimed mineral interest, um, we have, they have to send it to us, we basically don't do anything with it, other than have it ready in case somebody wants to come in and view if they have any unpaid, but it just needs to be on the agenda, that way it would be a motion in the paper.
Some regular sign?
No.
Make the motion through. Do they need a motion?
I guess. Just make a motion to accept it and it'll be available for viewing in my office.
My name ain't on there, is it?
I didn't work for my own.
There's Phillips. Jean, Jean Phillips, who that is?
Whoever.
You don't have to, you don't have to ground that up, county, anyhow. Yeah, we do. Well, you do, excuse me.
I didn't say that.
I think it, all right.
Although, tenor, not tenor, executive session is allowed, open state statute title twenty-five six three oh seven, paragraph B one, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of an individual salary public officer employee, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of employee, Tony, how our courthouse maintenance?
I move to enter.
Second.
All in favor? You might as well clock it, I can't take more time than this.
Ten forty-one, so I'm, so. Ten forty-nine, when they made the motions.
Did you give me to leave or stay?
Do you need to stay? Approve, this is approved, any decisions arising from executive session on all, I gotta read a lot. I make a motion to table executive session to review our findings.
Second.
That tails next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Celebrating that, executive session next week, I move.
Yes. Request appoint requisition and receiving officer profit county district four.
This one, because that'll have been put on, our little thing, we have one, two, and three, but we don't ever have a four, and so, the blank. You tell me who, what, where, when, when, and I'll go.
What?
Never that ever come through, neighbor the other day, two weeks ago.
Don't get me. I bet my name's gonna get put on it.
Nope, nothing's gonna put on it, they're wrong.
Or requisition, um, you as the first one, me as the second one?
That'll be all right. You have a motion?
Um.
Receiving.
And receiving, I think Nancy's an obvious choice for District Four, who's a District Four item, I don't know who we go for number two on.
Individual districts.
We only have one more.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be two by statute. Sure. You want it?
What I should on there?
I need the two.
Second.
All in favor? It'll change next month anyhow, so.
Well, no, not on this, you won't have to, I mean, no, I mean, the auditors will change them. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's possible, see, she's asleep, she's still trying to fight her sleep over there.
So county commissioners are still the requisitioners, right?
Yeah.
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 Any ever seen business?
I'll, I'll see it's next January.
Sure.
Or did it?
Who did the motion?
I'm moving the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, adjourn, second.
Third.